Twenty-six, twenty twenty-five at 1:00 P.M. Sheriff Morley.
Introduce us to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Russo, Morley.
Here.
Wilson.
Wilburn.
Here.
Censor.
Here.
Approval of the agenda.
So move ahead, Sheriff.
Packet. Any discussion? Roll call. Wilson.
Yes.
Censor.
Yes.
Morley.
Yes.
Mr. Carey. Public comment for agenda items only. Is there any public comment for the agenda items? New business, Holton Lake lake level control structure or delegated authority?
All right. You guys have all your figures in front of you?
Yep.
Right down the line and ask any questions, interrupt me whenever you want. Okay, so the first figure should show the survey around the lake. This is the lowest 100 structures. You have the orange dots being seawalls. You have the triangles being, I would explain it as the lowest point around a house. So if you go outside your house where the earth is the lowest. So that could be where the grass meets the house. That could be a vent to a opening below the structure like crawl space. Could be any of those things. So what was found was that you have .8 feet before you start overtopping seawalls and you have 1.3 feet before water starts hitting homes. Any questions about what those mean in feet? Or inches?
Yes. As at a meeting where I thought I heard the engineers state that that's where water meets a home and they therefore think that is the point where structure damage can happen, is that correct?
That's how FEMA describes it, but you and I both know that a crawl space is probably below that elevation.
And this does not account for any wells that are below that level?
Nope, it does not account for any wells. All right, as you can see, they did include a max lake level in the past 30 years in 2013. And that was at 1139.5. And this is based off of, it's gonna, so right now legal lake level out there is 1138.1. This is with the newer data. So it's gonna be a little, all these elevations are correct, but they're based off a new data.
Madam Sheriff, I hate to interrupt, Chase. Just wanna, just for, does the public have this information available to them right now?
He's on.
Does the public have this information as we go over?
It was on the left side.
Should be in the agenda packet.
Well, I have it, but it's like, Mr. Goodman, do you have a copy of this?
It was on the, it was on the county.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that the public has a copy of it.
But.
Thank you, Madam Sheriff, sorry to interrupt.
That's okay.
So that is the highest it's been in the last 30 years. All right. Next slide. This is how the seep or wind events affect Holton Lake. This is just based off of last year's data, because that's the first time there were a gauge, there was a gauge on each side of the lake. What that, what those elevations are, so the bottom on your x-axis, those are your wind speeds. On your vertical y-axis, that is your change in depth. So looks at, so if you have a wind coming, the wind will blow one side down, the other side up. So if you're blowing into a bowl, the little waves go that way. It's the same thing with the lake. The one side goes down, the other side goes up. And that elevation change or level difference is the difference between those two water elevations. So for example, in this example, the dots are real live events. And the line is a linear regression to kind of estimate, get a kind of, it'll mark out outliers and just doesn't average estimating. So for, if you have a 30-foot wind event, 30, 30 mile an hour wind event, they're saying it's a half of a foot difference between one side of the lake the other. So that means, let's say if it's coming out of the southwest, that side will drop three inches and the other side goes up three inches. So you have a six-inch difference.
Question.
Yes.
If the 30 mile an hour wind and the other side of the lake goes up six inches, is that six inches above legal level or is that six inches above the level?
That'd be three inches above legal, because you're talking a difference. One goes down, the other one goes up, legal level being in the middle. That makes sense.
If we start out at legal level.
If you start out legal level.
But if we start out at a higher level, then.
Yes, and to your point, what I think you're getting at, this is all static. This is if everything was calm. This is not taking account waves.
So if 30 mile an hour wind happens and we're four inches above legal level, one side of the lake could be 10 inches above legal level, is that correct?
No, so it would, no, so if it was, if you had a 30 mile an hour wind, you would, one side would be three inches above and the other side would be three inches below.
Right.
So it's your difference.
We're sitting here flat.
Yep, sitting here flat.
We're four inches above legal level.
Oh, right now, yes, you're four inches above legal.
And then the wind comes up.
Yeah, then you'd be seven if it was a 30 mile an hour.
That one side would jump up to 10 inches above legal level.
Would jump up to seven.
Four and three.
Because you're not, you're not losing water. Does that make sense? Like a balance beam with your difference being six inches.
You're talking about two different things. You're talking like a median and you're saying on this side the lake's gonna rise up six more inches and this side the lake's gonna go down six more inches.
It would go up three.
I understand, we're just displacing water.
Yeah, yeah, you're displacing water.
But if I'm sitting here flat and I'm four inches above legal level and then that wind comes up and we're already four inches above, then that wind's gonna make me another six inches above?
Seven. It'd make you, it would make you, it would make you.
Three.
Plus three.
Total.
Total. Because you're talking, it's a difference, it's not what one side does versus the other, it's a difference.
Okay, does this side drop, we're just talking the difference?
Yeah, it's just tipping.
We're not talking additional inches.
It's not talking additional inches, yes. But again, that's viewed as, this is viewed as static. Because the waves are reflected.
And that's at a 30 mile an hour wind, we have nothing at 50 mile an hour winds, 60 mile an hour?
No, there was only one event that was at 30 mile an hour and that one was a large displacement where you would almost get, like you were saying, six inches on the one side. You were, you were probably four and a half inches. Because you were, you were just shy of eight hundreds.
Does that differential change drastically as we go up every 10 miles an hour? Or is that an even curve?
It would follow that, that linear line. So you would, you would assume it would be relatively similar and you could just extend that out to figure out what you'd get at a 50 mile an hour event.
So at a 50 mile an hour event, we could be nine inches higher differential.
Probably pretty close to that, yeah, so you'd be four and a half. And that all, that all depends on the direction it's coming, because you, that's based on the direction of your largest fetch, which is the distance from one point to another on the lake without any resistance.
This is assuming the long distance.
This is assuming from the structure to the Bayview Marina there. Yep. All right. Next slide. All right, this is a rain event in 2013. It was not a large rain event, but it was an increased amount of rain. It was a lot of rain over a three-week period. And here you can see how the lake level comes up and how drastically it comes up just due to six inches of rain over a three-week period. So you're looking at a change of about a foot, maybe a little over a foot, a three-week period. From six inches of rain.
This is measuring the lake level, but it's not, we have no information what the wind was or anything?
No, this was, this was based off the USGS gauge. So this would be on the ski again.
So if there was a west wind, the east side of the lake potentially could have been a lot worse.
Correct, yeah.
And that's, is that showing almost a month that we're crowding the stage of flooding people?
Um, I guess. I don't know where your legal lake level is at that point. Your legal lake level is gonna be, I guess, what do you mean by flooding people?
Well, if they want to study determine.
Where you're overtopping walls.
Yeah.
138.5, it never comes back down below 138.5.
Madam Sheriff, I'm sorry. I'm trying really hard to hear the questions back and forth. I have a lot of conversation going back here that I can't hear. So I just wanted to, could, did you repeat that one more time, Chase? I'm so sorry.
No, you're fine. So what Rex's question was is, in this event, did it come back down to where it wasn't overtopping or flooding people? And my comment was at 1135, 11, 1138.5, it starts going over seawalls. So in this example, it doesn't, it's still going over seawalls even once it's coming back down.
Do we know what the level of the lake was at the time that started?
What do you mean?
Well, the rain event caused start climbing up to flood level stage.
Yep.
And that lasted for almost a month.
Yeah, it was, I think it was a three week of, yeah, of heavy rain.
So we were above lake level when that started being a problem?
We were, we were.
Within a couple of days it started being a problem.
Yes, we were above legal lake level at that point, yes.
How many inches approximately?
Oh, let me do the math for you real quick. I would say at the start of that graph, you're probably three inches over. Maybe three and a half, three to four. It'd be, it's hard with not, without having the little lines going across. But three to four inches over at that time. So I'm 4-1.
Chase, did they look at all at whether or not gates were opened or closed at that time?
No, because they didn't have data going back at, in 2013, there wasn't gate data.
Okay.
I gave them all the gate data that was given to me.
Okay.
Yep. What was, what was bad, or not bad, but what was difficult was the two bad storm events we had in the last 30 years were in 2013, 2017. I think we started gate data in 2018.
Look for a seat.
All right.
What are you talking about?
All right. Any more questions on that slide? All right, so we go to a 2017 rain event. This was in the past 25 years and it's a 25-year rain event, so right on par. And this is, it came up, I think, four inches initially and then another two inches over a 20, the 24, the 48-hour period after that. And it's believed the reason why it came up additional is because of the watershed of Holton Lake is so large. So we get a rain event, Holton Lake will get, you know, X amount of inches, but then the watershed around it gets the same amount of rain and it takes a hot second for it to get to Holton Lake. So even, even with just a single event, even if you can control that, that moment, there's still gonna be some after effect that you have to be aware of. All right. So these graphs were, because there was no gate data, these graphs are assuming that you were leaving three gates open and three gates closed. At the bottom there, it tells you how the gates were done. So from October to March, assume gates are fully open. And then from April to September, you're leaving three gates closed and three gates open. You're leaving a half open. And this is what happens. This is how high you go over legal lake level on an average precipitation year. If you were to do that, based on the past 30 years of lake level data. Any questions there?
How much freeboard does that leave us at that point?
So freeboard means the elevation or the distance before the water starts going over you want the seawalls or hitting homes.
Probably at this point, the homes will know that it does go over seawalls prior to that.
Okay, so at this point, you are looking at, you're looking at about two to three inches, two and a half inches.
Freeboard.
Freeboard. So average rain event, half the gate is open, half the gate closed. Just let, not touching it all summer long, just so you get an idea.
So is this telling me on an average precipitation year, we can achieve legal lake level?
On an average precipitation year, yes. If you, if you banked whatever this amount is, which is, oh gosh, almost six inches? And you would have to start at legal level too. You're not, you're not bringing it down to winter level. So you're starting at summer level, you're, you're holding your summer level all winter and then banking six inches. Yes, if you did that, then you would be above the whole time. Does that make sense?
Yeah, your starting point makes a big difference on all these.
Yeah, your starting point does make a big difference, yes. Okay, but now if we go down to the next graph, this is a low precipitation year. You have the solid line and then you have the dotted line. You are starting at summer lake level all year round. You're, you're closing every gate the whole time, no matter what. That is your dotted line. So even if you kept every gate closed all year round, you would still just tap summer lake level in September. And you would be baking again six, seven inches. If you did not do that and you left three gates open and three gates closed during the summer and not bank as much, you would be below summer lake level pretty much after August 1st on a dry year. Again, this is assuming no winter drawdown. All right.
And these are graphs showing the lake level on a calm, flat day.
On a calm, flat day, yes. This is all a calm, flat day, because you gotta keep it static, because you don't know how the waves are gonna be and everything else. All right, now we have, starting at summer lake level, and we have a high precipitation year. You are gonna be very high all summer long. You cannot get it down. And that solid line, right here, it says no flow limits. If you see that, that means you have everything open. If you get a wet year, and a wet year is about 40 inches of rain over the summer or over the year. And then an average is 30, and a dry is 20. All right, so the next three graphs are the same thing, but now you're bringing it down the winter lake level, down your six inches every winter. So average rainfall year, you're bringing it down your six inches. And that is the, you're leaving three gates open, three gates closed, and that is your black line there. The dotted line is closing all the gates. And even then, you're still dipping below summer lake level in an average year if you do the six-inch drawdown. And you have, oh, you're banking here, again, probably about three inches, three and a half inches.
Well, it's, it's not really banking water if you've got all the gates open and the water keep coming at you.
So the dotted line is all the gates closed.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, that's why in there that line says water banking. All the gates are closed, because you're trying to retain as much as possible. All right. Now here's a low precipitation year. A low precipitation year, if, even if you, you start at winter lake level and you got your 20 inches that year, it was a low rain year, even with banking, you would only be over legal lake level very, a very short period of time. And then the, the black solid line would be not banking here. You're leaving three gates open, three gates closed. Again, this is just, they gotta, for the model, they just keep, keep it the same all summer long.
When they're looking at a, when they're looking at a low precipitation year, they're assuming it's low precipitation in the spring also?
Yes.
Oh, on this one then, a low precip year basically from May 2nd to middle of June is the only time that it would hit or be above legal level.
Correct. All right. So here's a high precipitation year. You have a high year, you, you came down the winter lake level, rains like crazy. Even with everything open, you're still gonna be floating above legal lake level by about three inches. Maybe four. Any questions there?
These graphs only take into a scenario of precipitation, nothing to do with other.
Only precipitation, yes. Nothing to do with any other factors. Okay. The next slide shows how each gate, now again, everything was modeled off of the gauges and rain data. That's how everything was modeled. The amount of rain came in, this, it did this, this level, so that must, that much must have been going out. That's how this was all modeled. So, you know, there's different ways to model something, but it was based off the fact that there's 30 years of lake level data, you might as well use it. So some of this could be skewed or not skewed, you know, not saying all this is accurate, because during that time between, before 2018, we didn't know how the dam was managed. So that data could be a little off on how things were done. So this is the thought, this is what the engineer came up with, where how flow increases as you open additional gates. So you have one gate open, you're, you're letting out 100 cubic feet per second. 250, 3, 200. You start to go down, so as you would, if you wanted to redesign the structure, even if you added more gates, there's not enough capacity down river to make it effective. We're getting rid of more water, because the river can't take anymore. Does that make sense?
So these are all based on the structure as it exists?
This is based on the structure as it exists, yes.
And a new structure can be built to release more water?
No.
The structure itself can be built to release more water?
So you would need to, it's, it's like saying, I'm gonna take a fire hose, you know, a six-inch hose and put it into a two-inch hose. And I wanna release, release more water, so I'm gonna turn that six-inch hose into an eight-inch hose, while you still have a two-inch hose down.
Well, I understand downstream might be an issue, but the structure itself, because downstream could be attended to.
If downstream can be attended to, then you could get, you could get rid of more faster, yes. But your restricting factor is downstream, not the size of the structure itself.
Right.
Yes.
Well, I wouldn't think you'd wanna build a structure that's not capable of that.
Yeah.
Should, in the future, you get a permit to dredge the choke points in that river.
Yep. Any other questions?
With, with a new structure and the ability to release more water faster, we reduce the risk of causing flooding situations on people?
Correct, I don't know what that, what that is. I, what I would personally like to see is 50% more capacity. I know that's asking for a lot. Around 500 cubic feet per second.
Yeah, well, what we got now is something happens and you gotta try and play catch-up and there's used can.
Yeah. So it is a large lake, you need a large outlet, first it's a large lake. So the last graph is given high and low precipitations and then managing the structure in a way, this is where you're changing the gates, I think they model it changing it daily, in a way to maintain your summer legal lake level throughout the whole summer, based on average rainfall. Based on just, you know, they're, they're taking the low and high precipitation, but it's an average throughout the year. So we go through, we have our small dotted line at the bottom there. Now, we're not starting at winter lake level, we're starting in between, because if you start at lake, you start at winter lake level and you get a dry year, like what Darlene said, you're barely, you're barely having summer lake level for, what, only a month and?
Month and.
Yeah, month and some change. You get a high year, you can maintain legal lake level, no problem. But you still are gonna have to bank a little or retain a little bit of water. I think on this one, you're looking at two and a half inches to hold it until September 1st. And then your ideal lake condition would be slightly below that, about two inches. And that would be an average, this is your ideal average year. But I would assume, looking at this graph, that's pretty close to what happened last year. Is the solid line.
Well, then you're looking at April to roughly September.
April to September, yes. And one thing to notice is that in some of here, in some of these slides, it says 26 cubic feet per second. That is the minimum flow that has to go through, sorry, that was the minimum flow before we started this.
Excuse me, Chase, can we not have the conversation over there, please? We're trying to listen. Thank you.
All right, 26 cubic feet per second was the minimum flow Eagle required before we started the study. And then the engineer went back and said, hey, can you make sure this number's right? And it was bumped up to 31 cubic feet per second.
That we have to allow going down the river?
Yeah, that you have to allow going down the river.
The engineer hasn't furnished us any information on risk assessment. In other words, if we allow it to go four inches above legal level, what's our risk factor and cause a problem for people?
They're not gonna be able to supply that, because you can't, they can't tell you what the weather's gonna do.
Right.
So, I mean, unless you guys want percentages like you're gambling. But you, you, I mean, because it, I mean, all this is statistics. If you want a percentage, I'm sure they could come up with some.
There's not enough history to come up with that answer then.
Well, you, you, no, because you don't know what the rain's gonna, I mean, we, okay, there was a 25-year rain event in 2017. Well, when's the last time we had a 100-year rain event, you know? A 50-year rain event. Well, when's the last time we had a 100 year rain event, you know, a 50 year rain event? You don't know when these events are, what about rain event with a, they, they can't tell you what the risk is because they don't know what the risk is, because you don't know what the weather's going to do. Well, you know, they could say, hey, you know, if, if you keep it at, if you bank four, like on the example here, I think there's the low precipitation year, you're still banking three inches and you're still, you're only getting it for a month and a half. It could be a dry year.
Well, I know, you know, they, when they're talking stormwater and handling stormwater now, it seems to be the engineers are going like figure 200 year rain events back to back now because of our climate change. In this end of engineering, what's the train of thought on them?
So the train of thought is not doing it that way in this end engineering. Usually, what I was told is that houses aren't this close to the legal lake level. Well, it's usually they're not so much looking at rain events. The other thing that they're not looking at on other lakes is they're a lot smaller.
Yeah, there's no wind event.
Well, not, it's not so much the wind event, it's your amount of volume. You have 22,000 acres, it ranges four inches over 22,000 acres, and you're trying to push that through a little, whatever, 60 foot opening, it's going to take a long time to do that. Most lakes are a tenth the size of this one with the same size structure.
So the risk of causing damage is more like two days after the rain event than?
Depending on the size of the rain event, because you're, you're getting your, well, again, let's say this, let's say that the swamps are dry, because it was dry and you get a large rain event, well, they're not going to give you.
Flood plain to put it.
Yeah, it, it, there's so many factors, you don't know what, that's why they're not telling you what's going to happen, they're just looking at past data. Because they can only tell you what has happened. That's a, that's the problem with the weather.
Yeah. The weather's the problem.
Weather's the problem, yes. So the, when this was presented to the advisory board, the thought plan, the thought was that pretty much, no matter how you manage legal lake level, you're going to go below or above it, it's going to be all over the place. So what was, what was talked about and presented was an operations manual. This manual would be put together by the engineering firm based off the facts and it would be approved by Eagle. What, talking with Stacy and the engineer, what they're looking for is to go back to court and one, change to the new datum, instead of 138.8, change it to the new datum. Two, which doesn't change the lake level, just changes.
The number.
Yep. Two, to say lake level will be managed by this plan. And this plan is going to take into account the factors. So it'll be modeled to say, you know, the lakes are here, you do this with the gates, if this size storm is coming in, you do this. There would be a plan to how it's, how the gates managed, so that there's not this guess of, well, why are the gates open right now? Well, if you want to, wonder why they're open, you can go to the plan and it'll tell you, if you have this event or this happening, you do this with the gates. And it will take kind of responsibility off the operator just guessing, put it in a manual. That was what was presented. What you guys can see in all of these scenarios, you cannot hold that lake level flat, doesn't happen. There's always a bump up in the spring and it goes low in July, August, September. And the only way to maintain above legal lake level on average or dry years is to retain a little more water in the spring. They use some to carry you when it's not raining. So I think what the question is on most people's minds is you, you do nothing in the spring, do you retain nothing or, because I don't know how the, so when I, we, we talked with Luke Trumbull, it was, there's got to be some point where once the lake reaches a certain elevation, you have to open up everything, if that makes sense. So that you're not harming people. So that point is like Rex said, is based on a risk. How much do you want to gamble that something bad will happen? How much do you want to gamble that you have a 100 year, 100 year back to back like Rex, Rex was saying, or what if it's just, you know, little 10 years all, you know, little one year events all summer long and you have no problems? That is the number that I, as the operator, would like to know and I would think the engineer would like to know so that it can be modeled in to create the best curve to maintain the summer legal lake level.
Is the water level in the spring, that's important to maintain summer level, correct? What the, what the level is in the spring?
Except for in a wet year, in a wet year, if you're at or above, it just keeps rising.
Um, but also when the spring is the critical time when the potential for flooding is greater.
Correct. And that's what's so good about the manual is that it will limit that risk. But it will limit that risk up until a point because there's got to be a max that needs to be retained to give you a legal lake level, a summer legal lake level all summer long. Does that make sense?
Once a plan, operation plan, if it's adopted, that's based on the structure that's there now, correct?
Based on the, and that was, that was the whole point of doing an operation maintenance plan. Court order would not have to be changed again because it's tied to the court order. The operation maintenance plan would be approved by Eagle. So a new structure, court order still says you follow the operation plan, okay? But that new one can be correlated to the new structure, it would be changed.
The new structure, you can change the plan somewhat because knowing your capacities and your new structure.
And not have to go back to court because you're not, it just says, I don't know how Stacy worried, the, you know, legal lake level will be managed per the, the Holtley Lake Operation Maintenance Manual. So if the manual changes, but that manual has to be approved by Eagle the entire step of the way. You could, you could say you want X and Eagle's going to kick it back and say no. But it's important to touch base with them every step of the way so they're, you're not putting something in that manual they don't want. I, personally, I think the most important thing in that manual is we all know it doesn't rain much in July and August. How much are you going to retain to, to maintain your summer lake level in July and August?
Yeah, I can see where the, the manual has to change as the season goes on.
Yeah, well, it's, it's, it'll change as the season goes on because, well, the percentage of large rain events will change as the season goes on, or the percentage of the amount of rain. But there's still got to be a point in the manual, at, at this point, no matter what, the risk is too high, you open everything. And I, I believe that's up for the, that's up to the board to decide. There's been, there's been suggestions on what that should be, but that is a.
Madam Chair, another question for Chase. Um, so if the operations manual is, I like that idea, just from the little bit I'm trying to understand, kind of coming in.
Yeah, you can think of it as it takes away the highs and takes away the lows and tries to get as close as possible.
Because it's impossible to keep it at a set level.
Impossible.
The way it's been set up before, okay. So the operations manual wouldn't require us to have a court change of what that level is at this point? It is to manage it within what the current level is, the best possible.
It is essentially a document telling you how to maintain that level.
Got it. And our current structure could possibly do that, or when the, if there's a new structure, the operations manual could take care of that?
So maintain, so the current structure in a perfect year can maintain the legal lake level, but perfect year, it will probably never happen.
Right, yeah.
So you can get one where it can't get rid of water fast enough and you'll get one where you'll be extremely low. It just matters how much precipitation, when is and everything else. Um, the newer structure can be designed to be and respond better, but again, you're held by the weather.
Held by the weather, regardless.
Regardless.
New structure, current structure, we're still going to battle that.
Yeah, what Rex said of dredging down river, if you take that pipe down river and open it up, then you can, you can absorb these larger rain events and not impact the level of lake as much and maintain it better. What that amount is, I don't know.
Right, not there yet, right?
Well, I think, you know, if we get into the structure, then it's going to take a little history and operating to see what it's capable of.
Yes. And that was the other idea of you can create a manual and find that it's not working. And you can change it, you can correct it and not have to go back to court. It would just get changed, it would get run through Eagle, Eagle would say, yes, this looks good, we see that it's not working. And then you go here and you're not having to spend all the money to go back to court. This all flows through Eagle though, it's, you know, your suggestions or, and the engineer's suggestions to create something that Eagle will approve.
That's the first step.
That's the first step. But in my opinion, in that first step, looking at these, all these charts, if you're going to maintain summer lake level between, let's say, April and September, you got to keep it above legal lake level for part of the year. The question's how much? For how long?
Basically a balancing act depending upon the weather.
It's a balancing act depending on the weather, exactly. You have a dry year and if you're at legal lake level, you know, and after, and all the spring rains are, are gone, it's going to plummet. You could be at legal lake level and, you know, right when ice comes off and you have a wet year, you're still going to be four or five, maybe even six inches high.
Do we know was last year a normal?
It was an average year.
It was an average year.
Which is why it almost follows, it followed pretty closely to the graph at the very end of that black line.
That got us through the summer.
I think it dropped below legal lake level, I think, the first and second week in September.
And at the most, at any given time, we're only two inches above legal level?
On average, probably for most of the summer was, yeah, between an inch and two inches. Yeah, but what saved us, and it came up in the advisory board meeting, is that we had a really good rain event in July. Otherwise, it would have been a lot worse.
Yeah, we, with, with today's weather, we have no idea.
If that rain event would not have happened.
It doesn't come throughout the year, it just.
Yeah, if that rain event would not have happened, I wouldn't, I wouldn't be surprised if you were three to four inches in September below legal lake levels, that one rain event didn't happen.
Well, we're basically all in agreement that we have to have an operations manual for Eagle approval.
I, I, I think it's in your best interest to have one because it, it's laws by which you manage.
Right.
Approved, state-approved laws by which you manage the structure.
Well, yeah, when Darlene and I started the lake committee, that was one of the things we put in there, that we have an operational manual for each lake approved by Eagle.
Yep.
Remember?
Yep.
And, and it, it's.
It only makes sense, you know?
Yeah, I mean, this will be the only, only county that does it though. When this was brought up to Luke, he says, no one else does it, people do something similar.
That's fine, we're going behind and just doing it off the cuff.
Yeah, but the reason why it's needed here is because the lakes are so large.
Yeah, most other lakes are easier to manage.
Yeah, it's very simple.
Like I was saying, Helen, we're talking about fucking spillway.
Yeah.
Automatic managed.
Yep, and it does.
Totally different lake.
Yes.
This is decision based on science and, and science and technology.
Yeah, so then if I die tomorrow, someone else can just.
No point in me, I didn't die.
Step in and there's, it's all laid out. So anyone can take over anytime, so there's not this guesswork.
Basically a turnover file.
Yeah, it, it, it tells you exactly how to manage it and what to do.
So was there anything discussed in the advisory board regarding to what or how many inches that was suggested?
Numbers were thrown out there. So, um, I know four was thrown out, six was thrown out. That is for you guys to take into account, you know? I think that right now, to be honest with you, with the fact that it's 45 out for the last couple of days, the board may be itching a little bit to figure out what's going to happen with that lake this year because we're from being really cold to really warm now.
So one of the things, and I just want to clarify, everything you're talking about doesn't happen until the operations manual is created and approved and adopted by the court, okay?
Correct, so I can ex.
But what I'm going to caveat to the board is, it is several months before you would get a court date.
I actually have a, I have eight, May 30. May 30, yep. Um, the other thing that would be important is to present this to the entire public, all the data. By then, there'll be more data because this is, this is just preliminary, this is just enough to get as much out there as possible to give the Eagle to get the ball rolling before spring.
Um, Madam Chair, I think it's a responsibility of the board to come up with a number that he can put in his manual as far as latitude above legal level, he might approach. And, and, you know, I think that's the responsibility of the board to come up with that number. I don't know how the others feel on it, but.
What number are you suggesting?
I'm much safer with two inches than six by far. Because I made the comment when we all started this. I cannot justify flooding people. And the higher that number gets, because we're doing it in the spring, the more your risk factor plays into it. And we have history of about two inches doesn't seem to be a problem. That's just my idea.
I appreciate you willing to put in a number, I'm waiting for Mr. Russo to get back to you, see what his thoughts are.
Yeah, we're not going to make that decision today, no.
Oh, yeah, I, yeah.
It has to be the next meeting.
I mean, this is, this is difficult to ask, but I appreciate you being willing to be able to forthcoming with a number.
Um, the other thing I would, I would recommend doing is give the public time to ask questions. Um, so I was going to propose, I have to see if the, the school is available, the high school is available, so it'd be similar to the last meeting. We're going to, I would like to propose April 3rd for that, and there'll be a mailing that goes out. And by then, in the mailing, it will say, it'll give a game plan or everything's going to happen, that should be enough time for you guys to decide on your number.
Is there a way to do it on a Friday versus a Thursday?
That is the old, that is the soonest day that both the engineer and lawyer are both available.
Okay, so they're not available on the 4th?
Nope, I tried to push it as close to a weekend as possible.
Okay.
But that is the day where they can both be there in person, along with me, to answer every single question.
And we, do you have like a time that you're thinking?
I was, I, I was thinking, gosh, when was the last one that worked out well?
Six.
Six o'clock.
Six or 6:30, I think it was.
Yeah, it'll go out in a mailing so the people have time, but I reckon, I think that's, it's important that the public can come and ask whatever questions they have.
I would agree.
And there is, every, there's the engineer did the, the study, there's the lawyer saying what you can and can't do, and then I can answer whatever questions they have as well.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, Mark, the reason I come up with two inches is it looks like in a normal year, we can maintain legal level with that. Um, if we start sizing things for the extremes, you got to pick, you're going to go for the extreme where you're going to flood people or the extreme that you're not going to have any water.
I'll be conservative on my, on my, uh, it's just, I, I will be conservative on my, my decision also. Cause I, I hear what you're saying and I, I, I agree with, with your, your basic concepts. Thank you.
I just, you know, explaining why I come up with that.
No, I appreciate it.
All right, any further questions? Do you want me to tell Stacy to get that court date?
I would.
I would.
Okay, all right.
Get on the books before it's gone.
Yeah.
All right. Yep, so the, the plan will not be put together, the goal is um, to have a manual put together two weeks before the court date for Eagle and, and you, I don't know who else is going to review, but the goal is two weeks before. Before the court date, yes, because Eagle's going to want to review it um, along the way, I think there was talk of maybe sending them stuff every two weeks to make sure we're not missing anything and having to go backwards.
Stacy, is that also because of the April third public hearing type of meeting? If any of that needs to be changed before it goes to the court, does that help or does that even impact what gets presented to the court on the thirtieth?
I think, I think the April third is, anything can get changed before the May, whatever, beginning of May.
Okay.
And I think that the April thirds, one, is important for you guys to hear what the people have to say.
Absolutely, yep.
And, and two, it's, wonderful thing about this is it's never too late to change it. If right off the bat, it's not working, you go back to Eagle and you can change it and you're not having to go wait another three months to go back to court. It's never too late to alter this in little ways as time goes on and we learn more information of managing the structure in this way.
I think that's not only good for us as a county and as commissioners, but it's also good for the people. Because if there were problems and we have to wait another three months or whatever to get a court date, that just delays any other action when they're concerned, so I, I think that's a great plan.
Well, plus I don't know what the cost to go back to court is every time, but that can't be cheap either.
Well, we have to understand that, you know, this is something new. And there's going to be changes. Or, you know, you can't just put it on the shelf and say, that's it. You know, our weather can turn around and be drastic change in the future.
All right, any more questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jay.
There's a lot to think of. So. Now we're to unfinished business, the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-eight strategic plan. We want to take five minutes between these two.
Recommend a.
Come for a break? Okay.
This is a chance for the public to leave if they wish.
Yep, so we're going to take a. Say two oh five, ten minutes?
Oh, Madam Chair.
A minute.
Twenty twenty-eight strategic plan. So after our last meeting, um, a letter went out to all the stakeholders asking for feedback. I believe each of us have received the feedback.
Was that only two?
Yep, one, two, and one township supervisor.
Yep.
Actually, I got four.
Oh, okay.
I have one township.
Mm-hmm.
Um, who else do I have here? Somebody from the village?
Village.
That one came in first, I thought, then where's the other hard copy that I have? I didn't print the other one. Oh, here it is, that was my hands. Who else, what else do you have, Darlene?
Well, mine don't have names on them.
Okay.
You have employee ones.
Okay.
Oh, she has employee ones, okay, because I didn't, I don't have those.
They don't have names on their employees.
Okay, that's fine.
I don't have any names.
You want me to start with just a little summary of what I kind of gathered?
Yep.
That will help us, um, I think not only did we send the email out, thank you, Jody, to people, um, I went to each of the townships that I represent and even stopped by some of the department heads just to say, did it make sense, do you have any questions, something going on? One of the things I did hear unanimously over, they weren't quite sure what to do with it. So I think having a little bit of personal conversation was helpful. Um, on that, in general, I saw nothing, no one said anything that they disagreed with the four main buckets of goals. And lots of ideas about things within those goals that we should focus on that added to that and maybe where those would come, to me, would be in an action plan. But I didn't get much negativity at all about what those four were. I heard about the vision is that it was a little like, what was it? Be the county of choice through unity and trust. They're like, well, you have a goal about unity and trust, when you say county of choice, don't we all live here anyway, isn't it our county? I don't know what you guys think, but my explanation of that was, it was, the background of that conversation is that we want to be the place where people want to come and live, and we want to be the place where people want to work. We don't want just two people applying for a position here, we should have a lot of positions you want to apply here. And they're like, oh, that's what you mean by county of choice. So I don't know if that sheds light on if we want to change any verbiage, but that's, that's the feedback I got.
Yes.
Are you saying Kim, that is too ambiguous?
Pardon?
Too ambiguous?
It was just confusing from what I heard. Could just be communication and education on it, I don't know, but I'm just sharing so that we can figure out if we do want to change it or if we want to leave it and just be more explanatory.
Thoughts? You have any thoughts on that?
No, I agree with our, our talk was for people coming to our county to live and work.
Yes.
I sat down with Diane Randall, Diane Randall, the supervisor for Roscommon Township and had a delightful conversation regarding to this. I think we're on the right track, I think she agree with that. I, I sat down with Mr. Township, with their board and handed out the vision and goals. I'm sure they're going to take it to heart and give me some feedback next month. Uh, I said this before and I, and I truly believe this, that in twenty-five or thirty years, Roscommon County will be the, the place of choice. We will be, each use the word Traverse City all the time, but I think people will be coming to Old Lake just like they're, they're flocking to Traverse City now. I truly believe that, I don't, I'm not just saying that to sound good, I truly believe Roscommon County will be the place of choice. I think decisions based here today, this, decisions based in the future will make that county, will make that, uh, uh, come true, it'll come to fruition. We've got more lakefront than anybody else and water's going to be the big draw.
Greg, did you hear me? I don't see Greg here yet.
Greg's right there.
You moved on me.
As far as the vision goes, I think the background that we had given and maybe some people didn't understand or hear the background, I think that it's, I think with education.
Sure.
It would be understandable to a lot of people. Well, I'm okay with keeping it where it is.
Madam Chair, do you mind sharing any summary from the peep, the employees comments? Because I did, I only got verbal comments from them, so I didn't know if you heard anything different.
So when I look at these under vision and I just kind of dotted down some of the things that were said, um, being transparent, informative, make sure that information is available and unity and trust. Some people thought maybe possibly starting with our vision with unity and trust versus what we have.
As, as like the intro, with unity and trust, we will be the county of choice.
Possibly.
That statement. I also heard to communication. That is maybe the action item of how we build trust and unity is the communication.
Right, okay. If we went to goal one, some of the things that, um, were written down was, one, why do businesses fail? Our goal one, develop and sustain financial strength and stability. One of the questions was, why are businesses failing that do come into town? Is it because of pay, is it because prices are too high, what is that reasoning? Um, another person suggested that with all the tourists that we have and not being able to keep up with things, possibly the first responders, um, need to be taken care of in a different manner, a different way, um, whether it's pay, benefits, things of that, you know, so that the influx of people, especially during the tourist season.
I might be able to build on that, sorry, I think that that's another pretty, not in the same words, but a pretty strong message that I've heard even from our townships is growth doesn't always mean bigger necessarily and that if growth is something we need to do, we have to have the infrastructure to support that growth.
Correct.
If, if we're all about the tourists who come here, do we even have that capacity from an infrastructure to accommodate all of them coming to our lakes and coming to be this wonderful place? So I think it's putting the cart before the horse at times, how do you grow incrementally with infrastructure to support the people coming here? Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm. And some of the other things that were mentioned was as far as each of the commissioners taking a part of the budget and knowing that part of the budget inside and out, there's five of us dividing it into five, make sure that we know and what, and understand it. And truly, truly understand it and being able to explain it. Um, build trust regarding the finances, um, know, know when money's going, needs to be cut, um. So one of the main things that I heard over and over again, and I think that kind of builds on the trust issue, is that they've heard that programs are going to be cut and then they're not. That there's no money for them and then all of a sudden they're not cut and miraculously there's money, with no explanation of where that money came from. Whether it was taken little by little from each department or things like that, um. And then another person had commented about cut unnecessary spending and consolidate positions overall that would save the county money.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'd like to comment on the infrastructure comment. Um, seems to me the last ten or fifteen years with the big influx of people into our county, our infrastructure has not been able to keep up, especially with the weekends in the summer. Um, and we've actually had to make cuts on the infrastructure when we should have been going the other direction to be able to take care of services to the public.
Kind of goes back to budget management.
Yes, I know.
As a whole, right? And preparing not just next year, but thinking forward for the next three, what do we need to have, so.
It's like, I'm, I'm sure our police department is really strapped on weekends in the summer.
So the one thing that will caveat you guys, if you remember when we tried to do the village, everybody wants to pay more taxes if they live here.
I know, it's a catch twenty-two.
So getting your plan together, um, and putting goals and getting by in from the community, in my opinion, is huge. Because it's very hard to convince people to pay for services that they are not seeing a benefit of. The other portion of that to think about when you do your action plans, when you talk about um, going down and maybe doing more lobbying is there are tourist tax laws that are not applicable to our community because of the size of our county that would allow us, if those could be changed, to capture the dollars of the people that don't live here year-round or permanently um, and put them into the infrastructure that is so badly needed to support that. Sorry, I didn't write that down.
Um.
I have a feeling you can write it down, but I, can I, sorry Rex, go ahead.
What I, what I'm finding is, you know, as our infrastructure does not grow with our population, people move here because it's supposedly a better place to live, but now we're reaching the point where we can't take care of them people and protect them people, like should be. So, yeah, developing our infrastructure is huge, to be able to, for our future.
You know, it's all about the lakes, at the end of the day, it's all about water. Every county that I'm aware of and every county commissioner I've known throughout the years has voiced the same concerns, everybody's after the same market share. And we are Michigan's other Great Lakes, a slogan I coined years ago. Herb, Herb, Herb and I go to church together. We have one kid in the youth group, and that's my son. We are, we have, we are the oldest county in Michigan. That's a fact, we have more veterans than most counties, that's a fact. We have to focus on what we have, we have the lakes, we have senior citizens, we have good schools, we have good churches, a good community, but it's all about the water. We need to focus on that. Everybody's again after the same market share as we are, but the lakes are the key ingredient for the, for the future of this county. It's all about the water, at the end of the day.
If that's true, then goal three around a lake management plan is important.
Imperative.
However, there are many people who say, I am done hearing about a lake. I don't live on the lake and you're not taking care of any of the rest of us in this community. So there's another side of that story. Yes, it's an important asset, but if we've negated people who don't come to the lake all the time and other people in our community, the services that were mandated to give, sometimes without funding, or other things that we choose are really important to keep our people healthy and safe, and it's not just the lake. It is a portion of what we need to, to consider, but it is not the only thing in my mind. That's just my take.
I'll, I stand corrected, it's not always about the lake, but the lake is the reason why we're here. It is, at the end of the day, it's about, it's about the lake. Indirectly, it's going to be about the lake, again, people don't necessarily live on the lake. It may not have a direct impact, but at the end of the day, Old Lake is Old Lake, it's Old Lake is Lake. That, that is the major draw, the, the key people here, that's why I say the next twenty-five years, people will be looking and going, you know, in two thousand twenty-five, I could have bought a house in the water for four hundred thousand dollars, that house will be going for one point two million dollars in twenty twenty-five years. Look, look at the resort or back in the seventies and eights, you could buy a cabin for fifty thou, fifty thousand dollars on the lake and you got a first-class cabin. Those cabins now will be going for how much, quarter million, at least? Property values are going to go up exponentially in the next few years, and I truly believe that. I may not be here to see that, but somebody will be.
I agree with Mark somewhat. And it may be a harsh way to say it, but the lakes are how we make our money in this county. But that's not the full draw for people to move to this county. And because we have attracted all these people to have a second place on the lake, our needs for infrastructure has gone up, not only to serve them, but to serve the other people that live here for other reasons. And, and I think we just need to understand that either way you look at it, if you don't supply the basic needs of people to feel they can live here in peace and be safe, you know, we're going to lose.
Okay, we have a first-class, we have a first-class police department, we have exceptional township fire departments, volunteer, might I add, we have excellent EMS people, we all know those folks, they're top shelf, they volunteer their time, often very little to no pay. So I think some of the infrastructure is already in. often very little to no pay. So I think some of the infrastructure is already in place. We just have to come up with a better way to create, still move forward to be able to attract more people. But I think that'll come just with time.
Well, you know, what I see is, is when the police department is over, overworked on the weekends, I understand, you know, they gotta have time off. And they, they do, they do a great job. But during the week, people in this county need protection and services. You know, and, and I think our infrastructures are getting stretched really thin now. You know, despite how hard they work and all the volunteers and stuff, I think we're putting quite a strain on them anymore. And, you know, part of the infrastructure is making sure we have medical care for facilities for people in the future. I go to West Branch for medical care. Most people go out of town for medical care in this county.
Yeah. So let me, let me try to circle back to the, have we kind of captured everything we've heard? Like from people, is there anything we, you've heard from somebody that we didn't capture? From a stakeholder or an employee or anybody?
Focus on the stakeholders that are here year round was one of the comments. They're the ones who are struggling. Find the ways to help them. Transportation was one of the things that was brought up by the transit authority. I had sat down with them and had a meeting last week, and that was one of their main points was in order for somebody to get a job and to keep a job, they have to have a way to get to and from. Not everybody can afford a car. Not everybody can afford insurance. Some of our communities have sidewalks. Some of us have bike paths. You know, when it's, in the summertime, the bike paths are fine. And I understand we can't do a lot about those bike paths, especially in Houghton Lake. They don't belong to us. They're an MDOT thing. But is there a way to maybe put them in touch with somebody that can help them on that? Because in the summer months, like I said, they can walk to work and that's not a problem, or ride their bike to work. But in the winter months, they're only, if they want to go or walk or ride a bike, they're riding in 55. I don't know about you, but I would not want to be riding my bike in 55. That was one of the things that was talked about.
Anything else that you've heard?
I've, when it came to finalize lake level management, yes. I mean, that was a hard yes and everything that I can see. But also when we finalize it, not just look at the levels, look at the environment, the ecosystem within the lakes, preventing damage, and accept when Mother Nature gives, gives us what they give us.
I think to add to that, and it goes back to goal one on budget, if we know, let's say there's new structures, there's new things, what's it going to take to make sure that there's some money in some fund, I say for lack of better words, that allows us to have the ability to maintain and do what we're supposed to do going forward too. So, it goes hand in hand.
And then as far as social issues too, they talk about mental health, substance abuse, jobs, benefits, housing needs, things that have.
Comes up every time I talk to somebody.
Yep.
Every, Madam Chair.
Yes.
County issues is going to have the same concerns. These things are nothing new.
I guess the question is, is how do we develop an action plan and try to move forward on some of those issues?
And not just accept that it's just a problem everywhere and just say, okay, well, everybody's got the problem and sit on our hands. You know, if we can do something within our purview, then I think it's our duty to, to try to start moving that forward. And if we're the county of choice, and other counties would be like, how'd you guys do that? From a vision perspective, okay, keeping the vision statement we have, are we all good with that? Or is there any, anything you want to change? I'm okay with it, as is?
We define it, can we define it even more definitively? I know that sounds kind of backwards, but.
What would you suggest?
I don't have, I don't have a suggestion, but is there some way we could define it so it would be more appropriate for our county? I don't want it to be so ambiguous.
It's supposed to be ambiguous, but you could look at it as a who, what, where, when, why type of a answer in a, because the vision should be broad.
I just wanted it to be too fluffy.
It's supposed to be fluffy.
Not really. I might, I might not go that far.
But I would say if you were looking at it from like a who, what, where, when, why type of scenario, if you wanted to clarify something, that would be the way to do it.
Darlene, it sounded like it was more of a, an education. If they didn't understand it, it was more our job explaining it.
Explain it and then they understood it.
Changing the verbiage.
Correct.
Right? Because this is where we landed the last time. All of us agreed on it, so.
Yep. I'm still okay with it, with the education. If somebody needs to know what we actually mean by that.
I think that's part of the action plan going forward.
Correct.
How do we build trust? How do we explain? How do we educate? Get feedback, be transparent and talk, that, that would be a piece of it. If we like the verbiage, I'm less hung up on the verbiage as I am, just be in the county where people want to come and they trust us, so. All right, so we're kind of good on that one? What about goal one? Do we need any changes to the verbiage there? Develop and sustain a financial, oh, let me say that again. Develop and sustain financial strength and stability.
I think we're on the right track.
I thought, yeah, sustain. That's, I wanted to make sure that word's in there at least. Because that's key. Decisions that are going to help us sustain going forward. I'm okay with that one. It is our primary job description as commissioners. So if we don't get that right and not know it, and know when we have to make cuts or not make cuts, or how to benefit better, then, then we're missing all the marks, to be honest.
Correct.
Goal one's going, anything else on budget?
I like it.
Goal two. Are we okay with the verbiage there?
Increasing levels of trust and unity within all stakeholders.
You know, I have a comment in regard to that. Hey, Ben of the board, this is my 23rd year, and I've worked with a lot of exceptional commissioners throughout the years. I mean, some really, really tough, top shelf people, both men and women. But I can say without reservation, this is the finest group that I've worked with as a whole. And I believe that this, this group's transparent. I believe they're open minded, and I believe we make our decisions based on what we think's best. There's never been any collusion that I'm aware of. It's been pointed out before. Everybody really comes together. We, we know each other because we work together. We wouldn't know each other if we didn't work together. So I, I want to tell the public, this is the finest group of people that I've had a pleasure to work with, and that's including the staff too. So I really think we have the finest group of people to put this thing forward.
I think it's the right time. I think we've, I think this is the moment. I think we all have agreed. If you think about, even though they're not written down, board behavior, board conduct, that it is our job to debate and hear all sides. But it is our job to unite and move forward when the best decision could be made, and that's where we're moving. And not to derail us from making any more progress. So I, I would agree. I think we've got a good group. I think we've got great staff. Now we've just got to start moving forward and having some good things take place in the next four years. So I'm good with goal two, but any thoughts there?
I'm good with goal two. Goal three, finalize lake level management plans and processes. I think that that's imperative. I think we've all stated that for an abundance of reasons. One, it's a huge part of our county. All three of our lakes are. And I think it's necessary in order for this county to continue to grow, to attract.
Absolutely. And I will say that it, many times you hear, it's never going to be solved. It's been going on for generations. You're not going to solve it. I don't buy that. It is time to have a solution. It's never going to be perfect. We can't control weather. But those lake level managers are critical for the people who come and visit. They're critical for the people who live there. They bring us money. And it has derailed many other things in this county over the last several years for moving forward. And so I just don't buy that mentality anymore to just give our hands and sit on them and go, well, it's never going to be fixed. Then why do we have meetings all the time? We have to come up with those solutions sooner than later, so.
We're definitely going to be solution based.
Yeah.
Goal four, advocate for social issues that impact Roscommon County. And that's a broad topic.
Very broad.
Well, I can start the topic, Madam Chair. I think the veterans' office does an exceptional job. I think we have like 2,700, I can't remember exactly the name, but I think it's like 2,700 veterans in our county. They do an exceptional job advocating for the veterans. So that's just one estimate.
This really wrapped up a lot of conversation from people about, I mean, blight got brought up, which is more of a township decision, not a county. Transportation, mental health.
Substance abuse.
Exactly. Housing. And so I don't, I don't know what the exact action plan, and that needs to be our next step. But I think part of this comes back to working with our stakeholders and not trying to do stuff separately. The county do one thing, the township do another. I just think that that's, the resources, time, money and everything, and volunteers is just small in this community. And they're tapped out. And if we can't work together on a solution, whether that's advocacy, whether that's working with our state legislators or our federal legislators, this is where that time is better spent, is to help us move the needle on the things and share with them how that's impacting us. So I, I think that kind of falls under that bucket. It's not something we have direct control over all the time, but it's stuff that we could be the, the convener, the facilitator, and that advocate for making that move forward. That's what I see that bucket being.
I think a lot of our social issues are trying to be dealt with at the township levels also. And I think maybe we can accomplish more townships and county working together on issues. I mean, I realize the townships, they have the authority in a lot of cases.
Absolutely.
But there's also in some of them cases, there's things that perhaps the county can do that would help them along with achieving what they want.
I agree. I think they're willing to hear that. I think they're at a spot too that they are interested in having more communication or collaboration.
You know, you talk about social issues, I just think of KFC, the Eagles, Els, and Moose. I think the EFW, the American Legion. I think my friends, good, good friends Bruce and Maria Bentley, who put together Toys for Tots program, they served over 1,100 kids this year. We, we showcase some of the things that we've done in our county better than anybody around us, at least contiguous to our county. I mean, Bruce and Maria put together 1,100 kids in this county in the Toys, and they put that together. So we have some really exceptional folks doing a great job here in town. We want to make sure we applaud them for their, for their selfless service.
Maybe that's part of one of our action items, to build trust, to build unity, to show the community where we're working and how we're working together. Because we don't do those programs. It's not us to duplicate effort, but to highlight and celebrate in our meetings or however we choose to do that, the groups that are really doing great things on a social, on social issues in our community. I mean, we can do that as well. Make sure we continue to highlight the great things that we do as well. Does that make sense?
Well, it does, because I mean, I think of Jay Jacobs and all the good work he's doing at the Chamber with Tim O'Tone and even the Bud Bash, hate to use that word, because people always put a negative spin on it, but there's a lot of good things that happen. The Chambers do an exceptional job. We have to sometimes applaud our successes too. Because we have some folks in this town doing great, great things, and we need to make sure they're applauded.
We have people doing great things that maybe not people, everybody knows about. You know, last meeting, Bronda came in and talked about transportation. I didn't know that if somebody is taken to the hospital and they have no, you know, and then they're released, that the transit authority can step in and bring them home. I had no idea that that was readily available to the citizens.
And look at our children's access, access center. A lot of things that we're doing better than anybody around us. And let's face it, there's just some things government can't take care of. At the end of the day, there still has to be personal responsibility. I know that's maybe not a popular thing to say. The government can only do so much.
Then it sounds like our next step would be to start putting maybe goal by goal an action plan together. How does anybody propose that we move forward on that?
All right, I'm the weirdo of the group. I do know. I'm, I'm the goal nerd. I sent Darlene just a template just last night, just as a start, as a graph, to say, goal one, January, February, March, April, May, start plugging and playing all the things we've heard. What needs to come first, second, and third? And so I think it's at least a template for us to either, I don't know if it's a work session, that's up to you guys, if it's a part of a regular meeting, how do we start plugging and playing in that grid and start identifying what's priority to move us forward? So it's just a template to start with.
I agree. I mean, I'm a military guy, so I have benchmarks and phase lines. That's how I think. You need target dates to accomplish something. You don't hop in the car to go to Mount Pleasant and just randomly drive. You have to have a plan. So we have to have a plan with dates specific, at least those dates can always be adjusted based on the needs. To have a plan. Based on a plan, then we at least have a plan of action. So yeah, I'm fine, I'm fine with the template. I'll agree for whatever you put up with. Bottom line is, we have to, we have to start date.
Right. Would it make sense to just plug and play what we think on that? You know what I mean? And as a start and then review, I think we should add this first, second, or third, and at least get. My thought is if by another month, we need to be moving. Start saying, this is what we're doing, and then our community's also going to know, they're working on this now. This is coming next. I mean, I think that also goes back to trust and transparency that people know what's on the horizon. So I, I don't want to push it off for too long, but if we can all over the next few weeks start plugging what we think needs to, even if you get the first three to four months in, maybe it's too hard to think out through December, I'm okay with that. But we've at least got to have something started for the next few months.
You, you don't have to have a perfect plan, but you do have to have a plan.
Maybe we could review that at our next work session, maybe, or I don't know how quick we can turn that around.
Yeah, we don't want to get so wrapped around the plan that we focus on the plan. We have to focus on the plan of action. You can spend more time on a plan, developing a great plan, but at the end of the day, you have a great plan, but if you don't have action, you just got a great plan.
Right.
So if everybody kind of brought their, their thoughts and ideas, and then we can start prioritizing and how we're going to do things and start moving.
I'd recommend, Madam Chair, since we did that today, maybe have a work session in a couple, three, four weeks, whatever is would be convenient, you and Mr. Weiss, come up with a plan that we'd have a work session just focusing on that.
But if I hear you correctly, we're supposed to give them feedback before they do that. That doesn't omit others from providing the work they need to do to put that together.
Right. I, I don't want to be ambiguous. I just feel whatever date you think would be good. Right. I don't want to be ambiguous. I just feel whatever date you think would be good, maybe a month from now or two weeks, whatever would be good. It'd be good then.
March 12th. I'm not here, but.
Look at Mr. Vice around me.
Vice, then.
I trust that you would give us enough feedback prior as well, that we can make sure that that is put in it as well. And if it's not, if it's something we don't agree with at that point, we can then maybe move it to another one, but at least let's make that a start date. See how far we can get.
I agree.
3/12, did you say?
So session on 3/12.
Feedback to Darlene for now, as chair, filling in the blanks. Then you guys will have something to present at our next meeting, right?
And feedback would have to be no later than, March 4th, in order to.
I think that's doable.
Next Tuesday.
Can you have something ready for packets and everything else to go out?
Just send that one, or you have it, if you want to send it out for people to react to, that might be a good start.
Yep. I'll send it out with a letter.
An email?
Any thoughts, concerns?
Okay. I like the visuals. You did good on that. Thank you. That I am not good at.
Okay, so moving on, we have no motions or resolutions, so we are back to public comment. Is there any public comment? Come on up and state your name. Make sure the green light is on.
Better with the situation you had the other day. Craig Cotterman, Holden Lake. You know, saving our community and saving our lakes are the same thing. People come here, rent us some out of state land, freedom like no one's ever seen before, so much state land. This water level issue won't save Holden Lake. We're surrounded by cement seawalls, floodwalls, dykes, burns. I think Chase said 90, 90 plus, oh, it's gone. 90 plus percent of the shoreline is cement, 95, I think he said. This isn't an ecological way to go. It destroys our lakes. I don't know, there was this one site where I actually started putting some stuff on it. It's a lake level discussion site. And we started putting some pictures of the damage, from storm damage. Of course, every one of those pictures showed a lake that was at flood stage. Anyone here know what flood stage on Holden Lake is? Rex, you know, or you don't? Okay, it's 18 inches. It's 1139.6 is the flood stage. The lowest elevation, the lowest floor elevation, which includes the crawl space or a basement, that's 1140.6. I bet half of the homes on Holden Lake don't make the 1140.6 for their lowest floor. My two homes don't. Of course, when I'm at flood stage, I got standing water in my crawl space. Where I live, I expect to be at flood stage every three to five years. You talk about raising a lake level, two inches, four inches, or five inches, or whatever. If you could say the lake will never get any higher than two or three inches, I would be up there saying, good deal. But we're gonna have floods. We're gonna have floods quite regularly. We're gonna have a lot of drownings too. Holden Lake is a very deadly lake. And I think you would find that a lot of these drownings are because of the seashore effect, these wind-driven tides. Keeps the lake from freezing in the wintertime, this bounce effect. But also, just like a storm surge, just like, what do they call those when you're swimming? You get an outflow. These are deadly. Oh, I'm sorry. Am I over my time? Oh, yeah. Rip tide, yeah. And if you want to save this community, we start by saving the lakes. Everyone knows that. You can't continue to manage the lake for outboard motors and not address the volatile solids in the lake, the P A Hs, tuleine, benzene. Holden Lake's one of the most polluted lakes in North America with used motor oils. Not so much from the boat motors, it's from the old snowmobile traffic we used to have. We have a lake management plan, 2018. I worked on it. Maybe you should read it. It has some real concerns. Is the lake safe for swimming or wading? It's threatened. Are the fish safe to eat? Are the fish in Holden Lake safe to eat? Eleven metals, seven pesticides, and three organics. We still don't have the PFAS data on the fish. We got the PFOS data. And the dioxins or the, what's the other one that's so bad? I don't think the fish are safe to eat. And there's data out there saying this, but it's covered up. Again, if you want to save Holden Lake, you start by water quality. It's just that simple. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Afternoon.
Hello.
My name is Michael Bond. I am a property owner with my family. I have 168 acres, point eight acres, between M55 and Holden Lake. And high water affects the, worse than that, it affects everyone who is on the lake. Because when the lake is at its legal level, of my 168 acres, I can get to all but about three acres. When it's above the lake level by two inches, I can get only 145 acres. When it's six inches over, I can only get to 120 acres. And you say, well, gee, that's not too bad. You just have to have 168 acres, point eight acres. I am not, nor is anyone, entitled to a specific lake level. But I am entitled to have my property not damaged by this board. And I wasn't here for all the discussion. I heard some of it. I hear this risk assessment. We gotta take into consideration the risk assessment. Well, with all due respect, folks, you're talking about the risks assessed to me, Mr. Cotterman, to all these people on this chart within the green level here. All right? And it takes a lot of gall for you guys to talk about risk assessment. You don't know what it is. What it is, is me having to put in a new $20,000 well because somebody on this board banked water, and it was 14 inches over the legal lake level. And when I put a new cover in, the water didn't go down. When it is two inches over the legal lake level, the wetlands on my property, which filter the stuff coming from the south side, that's the Etten Township sewer, that's the storm drains, that's the stuff that comes from Walmart, Home Depot, all those homes on the south side of M55, that comes through my property between Chippewa and Iroquois. I filter every ounce of water that comes from there. And when you raise that lake level, the filtration system doesn't work. So that junk comes in, that's what Mr. Cotterman's talking about, that junk comes into the lake. So I'm asking you not to use your risk assessment. You don't have a dog in this fight. When I get flooded, it costs me $20,000 one year. It costs me $1,800 another year. When they get flooded, it costs them a new furnace and that. When, when the lake is high and there's a weather event with a 30 mile an hour wind, in 2024, look at your chart. In 2024, a 30 mile an hour wind raised the lake level on our side of the lake, the east side, by nine inches. Nine inches plus the two, four, or six you're gonna give, that isn't risk assessment. That's an absolute guarantee that some of us are going to get flooded. Now, if you want to share the risk, then I suggest that you put up quarter of a million dollars the loss of our property and the damage to our property. If you don't have any, any dog in the fight, you don't get to set the rules. And I'm going to say this, the first time, if you raise that two inches, four inches, or six inches, you're gonna have to go to the circuit court. And if you do that, and the first time we have a weather event with a 30 mile an hour wind, people are gonna get flooded. And I'm going to file recall on everyone who voted for that. I will circulate a recall petition. And I will fund it. And I will make sure that everyone knows who caused it. And it's this board here. The lake, legal lake level, we can live with. We can handle the variations by, by no other nature. But we can handle the variations caused by you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Austin Zerzinski, Holden Lake. First off, I just want to thank you guys, the board members, for putting this study, we just got through, Chase presented, together. Over the years, 20, 30 years, we've been hearing all these facts about previous studies and flood planes and plots and all this stuff. But up until now, we haven't had any accurate and up-to-date information. So now, we can talk about lake levels. At least we have some accurate and updated stuff to work with. I just want to expand on the very first slide, and that's what you're seeing in the first page here, is kind of the expanded of what Chase presented to you earlier. This was this, the chart where it showed the 100 lowest seawalls, homes, and then also garage, boathouses and sheds. So what I did is I kind of zoomed in on the lower part of that chart, just to show it a little bit better. First one I want to kind of point out is the seawalls. Those represent the orange dots we talked about earlier. You'll see, you'll see the line or the curve of the orange dots. And as it goes down from right to left, you'll see it descends, and then it gets to about 15 inches, and then that curve kind of really drops off. There's six orange dots after that, and the lowest one is at 9.6 inches. Those six dots represent 5.4 inches of water we're looking at on this chart here, difference between the top of that curve to that lowest point. When we did the petition, we deemed there was 2,200 properties, a little over, that were, had repairing rights and parcels that were part of the petition. And of the 2,200, we're talking about just these six lowest right there. When you look at this data, it's showing you that 99.7% of all the parcels on Holden Lake are over 15 inches or more at the top of their seawall to the legal lake level. That's what we're showing here, trying to show you. If you turn to page two, that's, is the blue triangles. Again, all the curve from right to left, gradual descending curve, and then there's a big drop off. There's two triangles down there. Again, 18.6 at the bottom of the curve, and then you got two of them that are well below the curve and kind of anomalies are, you know, outside the norm of our curve. There's three inches difference between the, you know, the normal of the curve to that. Of the, when we did the petition, including all the homes and condo associations, we deemed there was almost 2,400 homes. So if you take that 2,400, and you're talking only about two of them that are kind of dropping below our curve here, that's, we're able to say 99.9% of all the homes on Holden Lake are 18.6 above the legal level. That's what we're seeing on this data here. Third sheet, garages, the boathouses, the sheds, kind of the same thing. All the curve down, you see the bottom of the curve is 19.2, and you got three stragglers way below, 15.6. There's 3.6 inches right there. Again, we can easily, with this data provided to us, and knowing there's 2,200 proper or parcels, and we know three garages or sheds or pole barns or something are below, we can say 99.9% of all these garages and all that are 19.2 inches or higher than the legal level. Just wanted to kind of point out that information and kind of zoom in and all that. If you look at the last page here, this is kind of just no review. I just wanted to see, okay, what happens if we were to go up six inches or four inches? Let's say six inches right here. That's, the green line would represent where six inches would be on that chart we were just looking at with all the dots. Then we say, okay, we got wind-driven tides, and like Chase said, there's a four or, or a six inch difference, or the shift on one lake to the, one side to the other. Let's say we count for six more inches on top of that. That would be the red line you're looking at there. Kind of my point to this is, you see all these curves up above, and then there's just these couples, or these just small handful of properties that are below the curves. All these curves are well below that red line there. So my, my question is, is, or if we could, is to review, okay, let's take, why are these so low? Let's take a look. Do they get measured correctly? Is the measurement right? Or they must calculate it? Was there a clear error? Look into that. Next, review the property. Is, what is the circumstances? Maybe it's a wetland area and it, you know, is a certain circumstance, the circumstances, it doesn't need to be, or won't get flooded where it's at, even though. Next, just talk to the property owners of these dots.
Any other public comment?
Chase, I have one on the action plan. I think so. I, I know this is probably a little out of the, but I have eight guys that work for me, and they make good money. They make, you know, between $50,000, $70,000 a year, and they can't find a home to buy. They can find a home under, you know, under 100, 120, and it's in rough shape. Or the next homes, next tier is like 350 to 400,000. And I know it's important to have people come here in the summer and use the lake, but what happens is $200,000 home that people hear is a lot of money. It's not a lot of money to people downstate. And they buy up these homes for second homes. And then the people who are gonna provide services for these people, you want to show up, can't live here. I don't have, I don't have an employee that even lives in this county because they can't afford to live here because of these. And that was my point of view is, it, yeah, you, all those goals are good, but you can have as many people come here as you want, but you don't have the service staff or just people to provide the service to these people because there's no homes for them. And even renting is still far and few in between in this county. That's what I like to say. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment?
I'm Anastas. I'm, uh, in Marky Township. And I'm serving on the, um, Lake Level Advisory Committee. And, um, probably like many of you, uh, I'm trying to absorb and learn all the various dynamics uh, that go into this. I don't have an engineering background. I do have a, I have a construction background. Um, and it's, it's been enlightening so far. I've been a Holton Lake user and property owner for many, many years. And, um, in my own experience, speak to that first, I've always used the very sophisticated measure of when can I get my boat off the hoist? As my measuring stick for our water level, as well as my seawall. And for years, years and years and years, same boat, not particularly big, um, I was able to kind of get towards the end of August regardless of the weather. And that was kind of the measuring stick. Those last couple of weeks, I had to make sure I had family members up so we could push that boat off, off the hoist. Unfortunately, that has radically changed. Last year, I could no longer even put my boat on the hoist on the Fourth of July. And not in a particularly low area. It's been, you know, traditionally a pretty usable area. So my experience has, has grown, and I love, I love the lake. I love it up here. I've been coming up here since I was an infant. And, um, I'm, I'm not a local resident, but I'm spending, now that I'm closer to retirement, more and more time, and want to spend more and more time. And so the, the general community feedback that I receive, because I know oftentimes in these, you'll hear tons of negativity. Um, but far and away, far and away, um, at least the circles of the community that I participate in are, are extremely concerned and extremely frustrated by the low lake levels and, and all the challenges that, that go with that. So, um, I just share that with you because I assume it's part of my responsibility to share the information that I gather. Um, I, I, I split my viewpoints from mine to what I've collected so far as I, as I get educated by this, this process. I understand, uh, I too sit on some boards and understand the dynamics and challenges um, that, that you're faced with in making educated decisions. But, you know, when I listened to comments today about how important that lake is, that, that lake drives the economy in this marketplace. It drives jobs in this marketplace. It's, it's a major attraction to people all around the state and probably beyond to this marketplace. So to, to help the local residencies, uh, residents, the, the lake needs to be healthy. Needs to be healthy. And, and healthy means a lot of different things. But it certainly serves as a recreational lake and, and needs to fulfill that commitment that it has forever, you know. So anyway, I share that with you. I know you, you guys have to listen to a lot of information and digest it, but as a, a member of that committee, um, to date, and, and a lot of people are dialed into it, as, as you all well know, I'm very concerned that, um, the lake is becoming unusable in, in many recreational ways because of the, the lake level. Thank you.
Ready? Hit me up. Sorry about, sorry about discussing over there. Ed, Ed, Ed Stern turned around and pulled us apart. He said we were too, too loud. Okay, uh, I sent, I sent a letter to each of the commissioners. Um, anyway, my name is Mike Smoke. I'm the president of the Lake Association. Um, we handle a lot around the lake. And, uh, our, the biggest concern is, is we're, we're, our mission statement is protect and preserve Holton Lake and its watershed, both flora and fauna. And I don't think it's been done in the past. I've seen, I've seen these toxic chemicals go into this lake because the, because this past board turned around and just approves chemicals. They're, they're, they're going against this. And I, I applaud Higgins Lake for them going and doing the opposite and just, and just going with mechanical harvesting. And it's nothing that we can't do. The sad thing is, is raising the lake level is gonna affect everything around the lake, all these low-lying lands. Um, Mr. Baumgartner's, it's gonna, it's flooding, it's gonna flood him out. And he's been flooded out in the past. Um, anyway, I, I, I wrote to all of you and I said, it's gonna be a hard decision. You guys are gonna have to make a hard decision. You're gonna have to take the risk involved. Next, is this gonna be like a, your thing up here? Is that gonna be your, your new handbook? You're gonna put it towards a handbook, your staff? And then, and then Chase can turn around and add his handbook to, you know, about handling the lake level. And then your main handbook is gonna be the county commissioners. But you honestly, honest to God, you need to talk to your, your townships. Because it should all be uniform. Make a decision. This is what we should do. Ask them, what should we do? And then you guys turn around and you set forth this is how, that's how they want to handle it. And you got too much, you've got too many townships, I think, involved in it. You got Lyons or Garrish Township up by you, you know, they're dealing with sewer problems at their lake and how to control it. Um, needs to be done. I mean, and it's a tough decision. I'm glad you guys are working together. I see a lot better, uniform. I was getting ready. I wanted to get a permit to sell popcorn and peanuts out front here the last two years ago. Because it was a circus. I've seen kids that tur, tur, turn around and acted better than you guys. And you're the board of commissioners. Sixth graders that acted better. It's sad. Anyway, um, hopefully you all get to read it. You're gonna make an important decision. I know that. I get a lot of input. I still get feedback from a lot of people, including Higgins Lake, including Eric, uh, Mr. O'Segren. I, I, I get a lot of feedback from everybody. Um, and I go off of that. Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Okay. I'm gonna get these guys first.
Dave Schenman, uh, Marky Township. I'm also on the advisory board. Um, and we've had a couple of meetings with Chase. Um, I come to a lot of meetings since we moved up here this last summer here. And the lake level was always a big issue with certain people, and they were always asking. It seemed like when I came to the meeting, where are we at, at the lake levels? And so every meeting we came to, we always heard Higgins, Holton, St. Helens, were they over, under? It seemed to me Chase was doing a really good job at maintaining a lake level all summer long. I didn't hear anything like we were way over, way under. It seemed like every time I came here, we're in compliance. So it sounds like we can maintain a lake level. So if we needed to go higher, it seems like even we come up with a new structure, whatever, it seems like we should be able to maintain it. We did it this year, unless I'm wrong. Maybe I heard wrong, but I heard every month, you guys were saying we're within the legal lake. We've had rain, we had no rain. Chase was able to maintain it. So I don't know if in the past, that's why we got this bell curve, but it seems like we can hold it, whatever amount that we come up with, we should be able to hold that lake level fairly steady. Maybe I'm wrong, but that's what I heard all summer long. That's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public? Okay.
Uh, we have Mr. Eric Osterman.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Been an interesting meeting. Um, a lot of what I'm gonna say, I said this morning, but I have some additional comments to add in with that. And I know that you're gonna be considering filing a petition with the court regarding a change to the levels on Holton. And it was petitioned by quite a few people, and I totally understand where they're coming from. Uh, but, uh, you did have a study done regarding the possible flooding if the levels are raised. And additionally, I understand that the study indicated that increasing the levels would increase the possibility of flooding residents. I can appreciate both sides of this issue, but I would suggest that you, again, you be very careful in the amount you raise the levels. Raising it too high may be very detrimental to the area. A little may be justified, but too much will put the county at risk. I was surprised in the past that the commission was never sued by residents on Holton regarding the flooding in the spring. The reason, from what I've heard, is that those who were flooded were never suing before was because the commissioner that illegally maintained the levels on Holton misled the public saying there was nothing that could be done about the higher than legal levels because there was nowhere for the water to go. We now know that that was untrue. I understand that with the study that was just completed, we now know that flooding can be prevented for the most part if we have a stor, storm event, as long as the levels aren't maintained too high to start with. The issue the board now has to deal with, and they are no, then they no longer have the excuse that they don't know about the possibility of maintaining the levels too high would lead to flooding, flooding. The issue you now have to deal with is that you now have the knowledge, the foreknowledge that a higher level to begin with may be a problem, and, and that will happen. And you will leave the county in a very precarious legal position and most likely will be sued. And you will lose because you were forewarned. I believe you will lose these lawsuits and it will be a cost to the county of a lot of money because you have the study now in hand. And most likely, the levels will be ordered to be returned to a more reasonable level. A good management plan would decrease the winter drawdown. That way, you could rebound in the spring quicker. That is what the court order already states for you to be in compliance. And here's what it says. It says, however, that said level be lowered to a level not less than eleven thirty-seven point six feet commencing on or about November first of each year and restored to its legal level commencing on or about April fifteen or ice out, whichever shall first occur. That means you don't have to drop the full six inches. It's optional. And it can be partially drawn down instead of being fully drawn down without a violation of the court order. In order to maintain the normal legal level, you may need to adjust the winter drawdown. The farther down you draw it, the more difficult it is for the summer legal level to rebound to its level. You have a management problem, much more than a water depth problem, and the winter level is a major contributor to having a low summer level. The water table needs to be maintained at a higher level in the winter. The bottom line is the fact that you now know what could happen if you maintain the levels too high to begin with and a storm event happens. That will be used against you in a lawsuit. An incremental approach would be best. Be careful. Otherwise, the county may be subject to massive damages if properties are flooded. The last thing, I believe that eliminating the ability to make public comment on Zoom that you passed this morning is illegal. I'm checking into that. And if it is, I plan on filing a lawsuit against this commission. I would suggest that you look into it further. I passed some additional statutes on to you regarding that. And, uh, I, I think you were totally wrong in doing that. Check it out. Thank you very much.